Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sanderson.
Here.
Mrs. Labuda.
Here.
Ms. Vedder.
Here.
Mr. Ruiz.
Here.
Mrs. Geiger.
Here.
Mrs. Edwards. Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Steingart.
Here.
Mr. Sorensen.
Here.
Okay. Reading of the public notice?
Notice is hereby given pursuant to not-for-profit corporation law section 1411, section D, section 3. Sullivan County Legislature will conduct a public hearing at 9:30 a.m. in the morning on the seventh day of November 2013 at the Legislative Chambers of the Sullivan County Government Center, 100 North Street, Monticello, New York, to consider the proposed transfer by the county to the Sullivan County Funding Corporation of the Cornell Cooperative Extension Facility located at 64 Ferndale Loomis Road, number 1, Liberty, New York 12754, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Edwards in.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Public comments? So do we have that list back yet?
No. Mr. Guglielmina.
Walter?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm counsel to Sullivan County Funding Corp. and am also here at the request of Cornell Cooperative Extension. I would urge prompt action today, following the public hearing. On the request, should it be looked upon favor, believed by the majority of those present, since there is a timing issue with this transfer. Mr. Steingart and the team at IDA and Funding Corp. will have a special meeting before or after next Tuesday's IDA meeting so that the necessary resolutions can be adopted by the Funding Corp. Hopefully, we would be able to get a deed from the county soon thereafter. And then there's a period of time that the Funding Corp. must publish a notice under the PAA, the Public Authorities Accountability Act. And the timeframe to get this done, to avoid a year of real estate taxation, would be March 1st. So the timeframe is fairly tight. Would only ask that you act upon it promptly after the public hearing today, one way or another, so that they would know whether or not they're going to be able to get this accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Okay. No further comment there? So we would need to call this...
Motion to adjourn.
...motion to adjourn this public hearing. Jonathan, Kathy, all in favor? Okay, opposed?
That was the only comment.
What?
That was the only comment.
That was the only comment. Ready to go with the next? Okay. Like to call the second public hearing to order. Roll call.
Mr. Sanderson.
Here.
Mrs. Labuda.
Here.
Ms. Vedder.
Here.
Mr. Ruiz.
Here.
Mrs. Geiger.
Here.
Mrs. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Steingart.
Here.
Mr. Sorensen.
Here.
Reading of the public notice, meeting?
Notice is hereby given pursuant to not-for-profit corporation law section 1411, section D, section 3. The Sullivan County Legislature, the county, will conduct a public hearing at 9:35 a.m. in the morning on the seventh day of November 2013 at the Legislative Chambers of the County Government Center, 100 North Street, Monticello, New York, to consider the proposed transfer by the county to the Sullivan County Funding Corporation of the Apollo Plaza located at East Broadway, Monticello, New York 12701, at which time all interested persons will be heard.
Okay, thank you. Do we have that list of...
There's it, sign it right there.
Comments? Do we have people who would like to speak on the Apollo Mall issue?
John would need to.
Okay, I guess we'll try and do this in... Okay. Well, we'll go in order.
Make sure it's the right list. There's two lists there.
I got the other list.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, my name is David Rosenberg. I used to be involved in local politics on the Village Board for 12 years. And then the voters decided I shouldn't be in politics. I'm an architect for 19 years and in construction about 40, a lifelong Monticello resident. I just want to state up front that no misunderstanding, I've never worked for the Resnick's. I have no concept that I would ever work for the Resnick's. But I'm here to urge you to move forward with this, to say yes to this. I was the architect in 2000 when the Holiday Mountain Motor Lodge became The Lodge. I was one of the project managers. And my dad was one of the original investors in the early '60s when they built that, and they built burners. All you have to do is go to Rock Hill and see the wonderful things that the Resnick's do. They're no-nonsense guys. They do what they say and above. And I can't urge this board more to say yes to this. I think there's nothing better than a true private entity to put things back where they belong. I remember when Apollo was built. I think you couldn't ask for a better team than Billy Butch and Randy to do what they do. I don't know how it is legally. I just know when you hear the Resnick name, it should be the county slogan. Let the Resnick's do it, and it'll get them. So that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you, David. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. I'm all favor of the project. But the Village of Monticello has supported the project. I think the deal was that Mr. Resnick put $650,000 on the table. A done deal. A check should be written today or whatever you guys, when you guys, to make the decision, at $650,000. This Village, the Village of Monticello needs money, and we can start today. So $650,000, I think that's on the table as far as the Village is concerned, and we'll move forward. And I think the project is something that Proposition 1 went forward, Mr. Resnick will move forward today, if it's all right with the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I go with you. $650,000 is the number.
Is that the number?
It's not the number, but it's okay. It's close.
Oh, you had it?
It's not exactly.
As long as, if it's a little more, we're happy.
We'd like it to be...
A little less, we're not happy.
It is what it is. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Just for everybody's information, there will be no action following today's public hearing on the Apollo. The resolution has not been completed, and that will happen probably in the Executive Committee. We'll have that discussion on the resolution on the 21st.
And I also think, if you don't mind, that I'd like to clarify that the same PAA notice, which requires a 90-day notice to New York State before the Funding Corp. transfers the property out, is necessary on Apollo if, as, and when you act on that.
Mm-hmm.
So as much as I know the mayor is anxious to get this done, unfortunately, some of his brethren that he's elected up in Albany have put some impediments in a way of doing it today.
Okay. Carmen, did you have something?
I just wanted to ask, what does to Trump for this, to Cor for... So the IDA is taking over to decide it about the funding?
This Sullivan County Funding Corp.
So this, yeah, but that's Trump for the IDA in the end, and the IDA would decide it?
No. No, no. It would go from the Funding Corp. to the developer at that point. Then the developer would make his negotiation with the IDA.
So anything that the IDA were decided to this, I know against, you know, Mr. Resnick will take over the Apollo. I'm very glad that that would happen. My issue is about that the village would get all the taxes that own there that is more than $80,000. That's my issue. My issue is about the village not to lose any penny on this. Because we are now in a condition of giving, you know, we are in a condition of getting the money. So that's my problem. So whatever you do in your decision, I would like to know that the village also is being taken care of and the back taxes. You know, that's my concern about it right now.
Okay.
And the village.
Okay.
The village money, the village taxpayer, I am a taxpayer. I've been more than 40 years in the village, and you know, in the whole county, that's the higher taxes. And the village is the higher taxes. And that's what I want. I know, I make it clear, I know against Mr. Resnick, I know against the Apollo. I just want to make sure that the village is being getting what they're supposed to get, their taxes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Ken?
Ken, Walter? I'm going to look at this from a taxpayer's point of view. I have no problem with all this happening and that finally being developed. But I want to make sure that everything is being done and that all markers have been reached or going to be reached for whatever conditions were set forth. But the part that really I think we have to negotiate for ourselves, and we know we got a problem with the Sheriff's Department, the Bushnell Building. You got the boating machines in that building over there. They're going to be asking for tax breaks. It's going to take a while for them to develop it. I think we should have a, you know, let's sweeten the deal for ourselves, and we should have access to that building for four, five, six years, and therefore have a place for a Sheriff's Department, for the road patrol to be, until we finally get around to building a different facility for them. And we have it all for, you know, we benefit as taxpayers. We don't have to spend a lot of money to bring that up to a place for the Sheriff's Department. So I have no problem with it. They want the tax breaks. They've got to be us halfway, and they should be able to let us have that building for a certain length of time, tax-free, no rent, rental-free, I mean. And we just have to maintain it and put it back in shape so the road patrol could do it. Because what I see going down the road is, you know, eventually we got to do the jail, and then we take the old jail and probably use that for record storage because we know we don't have room for that. So there's a whole domino effect that this can benefit us as taxpayers. And I think that should seriously be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hold on, we have... Steve?
Today's an important step to having this public hearing. I'm glad to give the support of the public. I know we've worked very hard on behalf of the Resnick group to bring this to fruition. And, you know, subject to notice periods, we're ready to move forward the first day we're able to. So I look forward to redeveloping the parcel, which looks forward to it as well. Bringing some sales, very much needed sales tax revenue back into this, into the coffers of Sullivan County, and jobs and shopping opportunities into the village. So we're really excited. It's been a great week, and this is like a cap to the great, to the best piece it's been in Sullivan County. Thank you for the support. We look forward to, you know, see you on the 21st when we take action. And as soon as we can legally, I think we'll be ready to sign a deal with the Funding Corp. and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Alan?
I've had the opportunity to review the original letter of intent. And I think before I'm prepared to take any action, I need to have a legal opinion from our counsel in terms of whether that letter of intent is still valid. Because it had in there a term that expired on September 30th of 2013, and then there was a require, or the opportunity for the developer to make a payment of $50,000 to extend that term. Can anyone advise me whether that $50,000 was paid?
Can I just suggest that since we're not taking action on that today, that we will be continuing to discuss this over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be in discussion in the Executive Committee, that we have that conversation then. But in the meantime, we can check with legal counsel and see what...
Yeah, I need, I need a...
Absolutely. Okay. Correct. Okay. Thank you. Any other further comment? Okay, I'd like to motion to... Are you, did you need something? Okay. Motion to adjourn public hearing. Jonathan, Kathy, any opposed? All right, thanks. Okay, we'd like to... Are we ready?
Now it's 9:45. Yeah, you can start now.
Permission granted. I'd like to call the special full board meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Sanderson.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mrs. Labuda.
Yeah.
Ms. Vedder.
Here.
Mr. Ruiz.
Here.
Mrs. Geiger.
Here.
Mrs. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Steingart.
Here.
Mr. Sorensen.
Here.
Okay, we have two resolutions. Oh, you, yeah, we have two resolutions that we're dealing with today. Do we need, it says reading of public meetings.
We can dispense with them.
Okay. I'd like to take the second one first so that we don't hold these people here all day. So that is authorizing the transfer of certain property to the Sullivan County Funding Corporation for transfer to Cornell University Cooperative Extension.
Moving.
Kathy, Jean, this is a roll call vote.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. I had sent a list of questions to Greg, and we had a chance to go over each one of them in your office. The one I didn't, don't remember getting the answer to was the appraised value of the building.
Cindy and I talked about that and...
I didn't receive that either.
Yeah, and I said that Cornell doesn't have an appraisal. We're happy to help get one, but we thought maybe the county would have something here.
Well, from what I understand, because I had questions about the bonds and debt service, and, you know, the information that I did get was that bonds were fully retired in 2007. And my question was, without an appraisal or even a bidding process, the value of the property is 22 acres with the building. And I understand there's approximately estimate a million dollars of maintenance that DPW, or the capital projects about a million dollars were, which I understand, you know, if the transfer takes place, that the money is going to be raised to prioritize some of the repairs. But I guess as a nonprofit, and if I'm, if I have my information correct, they would be authorized to transfer to the Funding Corporation without a bidding process or an appraisal? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Walter?
The Funding Corp. as a 14, under 1411B of the not-for-profit corporation law, the Funding Corp. can transfer real property without consideration and without public bidding.
So if it's transferred to the Funding Corporation, then there's no value?
There's no requirement that the Funding Corp. understand the value either when receiving the property or transferring the property. 1411 specifically authorizes a local development corporation under that section to transfer real property without a bidding process and without a valuation process. And to get back to the bonds, the bonds were retired, and all of the bonds funding to pay for retired, the bonds was paid by Cornell.
Because I still have concerns about the process itself and the legalities of it. I did request a written legal opinion, which I did receive. But as far as the transfer, I once again, you know, representing the, you know, the taxpayers as a whole, want to make sure that, and I know the estimate of a million dollars was an estimate of repair for DPW. So I'm just wondering if anybody can kind of help me out? I mean, with no value of the property at all in the transfer for...
Well, I think, well, also one of the issues for me is, and I think that it's in the contract, but we're supposed to be that, in the future, if it can ever be sold correct and it would go back to the county, is that not correct, Walter?
A reverter clause, back to the county.
I haven't seen the information about that.
Well, because we did have that discussion, I think it was when you were here last month, didn't we, Ryan?
We discussed, you know, Cornell is a nonprofit and community, and we're basically serving the taxpayers, and we're not going to be selling the building for a profit or anything like that.
Right.
The problem, the problem with the reversion clause, and it's not a legal issue, it's a business issue, is that if they need any financing for this building and there's a reversion clause, they're not going to ever be able to get financing. Banks don't lend money to people who might violate some reversion clause and then lose title. So I thought it was, I thought that bridge was already crossed, that, you know, you had Cornell as a public agency. If they dispose of this, they would have to do it by court order. A not-for-profit corporation cannot sell a building other than with a court order. There would be a notice, there would be a process, there would be the opportunity for you and the county and everybody else to weigh in on that process. But to put a right of reversion in the D. would destroy the prospects of them getting the financing they need to fix up the building. I thought we had come up with a solution. I think the not-for-profit corporation law has a solution to that. They can't just go selling.
Okay, that's, I'm comfortable with that. I, okay. Unfortunately, the county just does not have the money to fix up that building. We have to serve the people of this county, and I think it's, I still think it's a good deal. And I'm happy you're going to renovate it because it needs renovation, you know, and we can't afford to do that. So, and it's still going to be for all our constituents, so I know there is...
And if they get future pledges where people, instead of writing them a very large check, agree to pay them so many dollars a year into the future, they'll be able to use those pledges to go to a lender in order to borrow money to make the changes that they need to make. And if they have a right of reversion, they're not going to be able to do that. So...
Well, I think also that the building itself and all the activities there are not the commission of the government. We've got roads and bridges that are in really critical shape.
Correct.
And that is not commission. Nobody else is going to build the roads and bridges.
Sorry.
Whereas you have stronger community support if you're renovating the building. How long does a funding corporation hold the property?
We hope to be in a position to convey tit, we need to be in a position to convey title to the association, which is, I think technically what it is, Jerry, right, by March 1st.
I think it's really important that we transfer this at this time. In this transfer, they have a lot of things that they need to accomplish. The building has been in disrepair for many, for years, and we don't want to see it collapse around them while we're waiting to fix it if it stays in our purview. And I think that's the important piece. We cannot afford to fix it. Even if we had it on our timeline to fix, it's years down the road, and meanwhile, the roof will cave in. I think that's absurd. We need to help make this happen.
Alan?
I see this as a classic win-win situation. County gets out of the obligation of operation and maintenance costs on the building and capital improvements, and Cornell continues to provide the excellent services that it does to our constituents in the county and be here for the long-term future. So giving them the permanent home, releasing the county of obligations to improve the building, I think is a win-win, and so I'm fully in support of that.
I agree with you. I fully support it as well.
I'm not going to make this a deal breaker, but it is nice to at least know the value of the asset that we're transferring. So at some point, we want an appraisal. I'm not going to hold up this vote to that one answer, but it's not, it's a valid question.
I mean, you got to understand my point. We don't own the building, the county does. So I was trying to go to the county to, hopefully there was an appraisal around. We're committed to get an appraisal if that's what she wants us to do.
No, we just want, I just want to know the value of the building. That's not a, you know, a...
And also, Scott, I just want, I did want to thank Cor for coming by. We spent an hour going through a detailed budget on the, not just the cost to renovate, but the plan to let her know that we're taking it seriously to raise this money and actually fix the building up.
Okay, thank you.
So you have prioritized your projects?
Of course, yeah.
Turning heat on.
Yep, we got to get the heat on first.
Okay.
Right, because I did see the list, and it was estimated about a million dollars.
Cor and I spent an hour going through that, so she knows it.
Okay, I'd like to call the question. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mrs. Labuda.
Yes.
Ms. Vedder.
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Geiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Steingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen.
Yes.
Mine's up.
Done.
We're at nine oh.
Nine oh legislature. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. Go home and do good work. I'm sure. We all settled here?
Yep.
Okay. The second resolution that we have, actually number one, is adopt a local law overriding the New York State Real Estate Property Tax Cap for 2014. This is a roll call vote. Motion?
I'm over for discussion.
Kathy, second. Cora, discussion.
I know that we're trying to live within our tax cap. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Chairman, go ahead. You go first. Okay. But I just wanted to ask Josh, as the acting county manager, what, if we did not vote for overriding it, what the consequences would be before I vote on this? So if you could just explain to...
There's no override of the tax cap. The legislative body would have to find approximately $800 in either expense reductions or revenue.
Eight hundred thousand.
Oh, excuse me.
Because we're done here.
Eight hundred thousand. It's about...
Eight hundred, I'll point it out.
I think it's technically...
I'll give it.
Hold on.
Technically, it's $798,061, but just say $800,000, you'd have to find in revenue, either a combination of revenue increases and/or expense cuts to bring yourself down to the cap.
We could do a combination.
It doesn't have to be...
Even in doing that, Josh, and I think we can, and I think we were going to work very hard to find that, and I think we can get, we probably will get to the tax cap. But I understand that in the past, the controller has changed some of the figures in the tax cap calculation that could put us in jeopardy if we don't pass this resolution. Is that a possibility?
Correct. Some of the, the Controller's Office was charged with interpreting the legislation that the state passed. So they've, through the years as this has been implemented, have included and not included certain factors that are now part of the tax cap after we've already adopted budgets. And so the concern is that they'll come in, we'll adopt it, we think we're at the cap, and they'll come in and interpret something, like the chargebacks, the workers' comp chargebacks or other chargebacks. There's an example. And then they would come in and interpret, make it a different interpretation or legal interpretation next year that would have us inadvertently or unknowingly overriding the cap.
Even though it's done after that.
Yeah, they, and so there's upstate, there's some counties across the state that are, even though they are at the cap or underneath the cap, are just passing this just in case that were to occur.
Okay.
And that's the whole point of this. It doesn't mean we have to override the tax cap.
Correct.
It just gives us the ability to do it in case something comes up.
I'm not...
Not that I agree with that, but I'm just saying that's...
Well, it's just more, I just don't want to be in a position that, well, because what would happen if, just say it was, you inadvertently overrode the cap by $100,000? That $100,000 would, you wouldn't then be able to use for your budget. You'd have to find $100,000 to fund operations or cut $100,000 out of your budget somewhere. So that's just a concern that at some point next year, you'd have, I'd be coming back to you from, and the Controller's opinion that, well, we inadvertently overrode the cap and now have to find X amount of dollars.
Well, we're going in wide eyes, Mike. When we set that policy for what we needed is the fund balance, and then we came in over that, and then that money was divided between roads and bridges and capital, right? There was still $900,000 over, right? Six was put in, four here, two there, and the amount was 6.9, so there's...
There's approximately $800,000 still remaining in fund balance that has not been designated, yes. So...
Even Steven?
Okay.
Yeah, my feeling, I'm, I feel that as a board, we can sit down. We're going to be going through the budgets. We have a tentative budget in front of us now. And my firm belief is that we can bring it down underneath the tax cap. Inadvertently, like Josh says, next year, I felt all along that we have to make tough decisions because to layer tax increase on top of tax increase every year, people are suffering greatly. So I'm not in support of overriding the tax cap.
Kitty?
I'd like to say I don't plan on actually going above the tax cap, but I think the safety net is the important piece. We had a public hearing, and nobody came to object. So it seems to me that the public understands that the mandates that are being issued by the state need to adjust ourselves. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't plan on staying within the tax cap, but I understand what Josh has said regarding the safety of allowing ourselves to override it.
And I agree with you.
So I'm in favor of, I'm at this point in time overriding the tax cap.
Thank you.
In the absence of mandate reform from the state of New York, I feel as legislative board, we need to make some tough decisions locally here, what's in our control. So to have that safety net because state mandates, we don't know if we're going to have relief from state mandates. So we, as a legislative board, cannot slap another tax increase on top of last year's on top. It's not working. So I'm a main opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we, you can be opposed or for. We'll like to call the votes.
I just want to get clarification on one more item. This was, uh, this was presented on November 7th?
No, we, I didn't know what, but we updated some of the numbers.
Yeah, I sent you the one from last year. So I just want to make sure if you're, that these are the same items that were done? Like, is this the part that's going to change, that what the state controller puts in and out? Calculating the tax cap, prior year's tax levy, pilot payments, tax-based growth factor, levy growth factor, less 2%.
The levy growth factor is set and can't change, and the 2% or CPI is set and can't change. The potential things that they've been looking at, one are the chargebacks, primarily the workers' comp chargebacks, and then the other chargebacks that run through the Treasurer's Office. And we still don't even have that number, so that your tax cap number will likely change. Not significantly, but it may move $10,000 either way based upon what those chargeback final figures are. And then they've been looking at other things, some technical things that get overlaid on the levy that get a little complicated. But those are the main things that they're looking at right now, potentially the pilots, because the pilot number changes from year to year.
So my question at the end is, if we put aside whether it's $100,000 or whatever we think, there may be that much room to change, that much cushion, could we do that? And then still, you know, if they come back next year and say, oh, you inadvertently overrode the tax cap, well, we foresaw that possibility and we put that money aside?
Well, you potentially...
Is that possible?
I mean, you, well, you'd either have to come in, I mean, if you're talking, like, to come in, you're talking about coming...
I mean, you, well, you'd either have to come in, I mean, if you're, if you're talking dot, like to come in, you're talking about coming in below the tax cap?
No, what I'm saying right now is it's calculated at two point one two. That's my understanding, right? We have a margin of error, let's call it a margin of error, of somewhere around a hundred thousand. Is that a, a good number?
I know, no, I just used that figure as an example that you, I have no idea. It could be ten dollars or five hundred thousand. I don't know.
By overriding the cap, if they do come in and change the calculation, they can't go back and make, make us reserve the money because we voted to override the cap. That's what this does.
They would come back and say you overrode.
No, they're reserving them on the now.
Doesn't matter what their interpretation is after you pass it.
Because we've got eight hundred thousand.
They would say you overrode inadvertently, but you wouldn't have to then find this extra pot of money within your budget that you couldn't use for the budget. So, you would, you wouldn't be, you would be able to correct it without having to have an impact on your budget next year.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Because if you, if you get it, if you don't pass this, but then they come back and find something, then you have to find whatever they, dollar wise, whatever they find as you overrode in your operations.
Which is why we have that extra nine hundred thousand.
Potentially, you could potentially do that, but yeah, that's the, but I, I can't sit here and give you a number because I have no idea.
No, but I can't see it being more than nine hundred thousand.
No, no, I doubt it, but you, I.
Yeah.
It's hard to surmise what, what they would be looking at new.
So, we've got that money. We can put it aside. We don't have to spend it. And then if we inadvertently overrode the tax cap, it's accounted for.
That's one way to do it, yeah.
Thank you. Finally got to where I needed to wait.
Okay, all in favor, roll call.
Roll call.
Sorry.
Can't do it that way.
All in favor, all in favor in this roll call.
That's the case, I don't think anybody's in favor of a roll call.
Mr. Samuelson.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
No.
Mrs. Labuda.
Yes.
Ms. Vedder.
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Geiger.
No.
Mrs. Edwards.
No.
Mr. Steingart.
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson.
No.
I think we need six votes.
You do.
Fails.
Okay.
We stay within the tax now.
Yes.
Just don't lay anybody off.
Okay, uh, public comment? No public comment? Motion to adjourn? What, you have something now?
Yes, it's after the fact, but I think you went definitely down the wrong trail.
I.
Thank you, whatever.
What it is.
Just a quick matter of reference with regard to the fifty thousand dollar payment. I think everyone's aware that we did sign an agreement to extend. We weren't able to move forward because county and the village were still looking at it. The college was just ramping up the steps. We're working out the annexation of the parcels, so, I mean, we're ready, willing and able to go forward under the same terms we agreed to. But it, that changes the game however, because in the terms, um, which expires September thirtieth.
Yeah, hold on one second. This is public comment and, but, so, I appreciate your comments, Steve, but this will be discussed in executive.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I mean, I'll maybe after.
On November twenty first at eleven thirty in the morning.
No.
Okay, hold on, hold on. This is not a discussion. Okay. Motion to adjourn unless there's further public comment from the public.
I'd like to applaud the votes that, that stayed firm or not raised, not going above the tax cap. I applaud you guys for that.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Jean, Cindy, all in favor? Okay, thank you.